I'd like to call to order the meeting for the Board of School Commissioners, Rutland City, and note that Commissioners in attendance, Solsa is remote, Peter Fagan will likely be late, and everyone else is now here. So, I'll wish we rise for the pledge of allegiance. So, in terms of the approval of the agenda, at our desks, there was an addendum to the personnel memo, and then I'd like to remove 6D, which is Committee Reports, the Superintendent Evaluation Committee Report, because we already finished that. So, I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda?
I would like to remove Personnel Memo 638 and discuss a letter that I received in regards to some, one of the members on that in executive session.
I don't know that a policy can be discussed in executive session. It would not meet the criteria.
Policy or Personnel Memo?
It's the Personnel Memo.
Oh, sorry. Personnel Memo. So, could I maybe propose that we move the, remove it from the consent agenda and put it before adjournment after executive session?
It cannot be discussed. It's, we can't have it spoke, it's specific, it's talking about-
It meets the criteria of executive session.
Yes.
What I'm, what I'm saying is, we, I don't want to hold up all these personnel-
Oh, okay, that's fine, yeah.
So, I would like to vote on it after executive session-
That's fine, yes.
-so that we can address the Personnel Memo. So, we, I guess, will, Personnel Memo 638, I guess, and the addendum, we can take it all up at once, and we will move that to 10 and make adjournment to be 11. Does that sound?
Yep.
Sure.
Okay. And, all right, can I just get some clarification?
What did you mean about holding up the other stuff? Like, what, I just, so I can understand-
If we remove this from the agenda, then none of these appointments will be approved for another month.
The other, that came in your packet?
The other one, she wa, you want to remove the whole thing?
No, I want-
Just the thing in the packet?
Move it down to the bottom, yeah.
Gotcha. That one section of the, of the memo?
I have a letter-
So, you want to go over the, okay, just so I can understand it for the processes?
I thought we were removing the whole memo, to address later.
Yes.
Yeah. So, we're, we are moving the Personnel Memorandum and the Addendum to after executive session.
Because you didn't want to hold up the rest of the stuff on the memo, right? Is that the point?
The other appointments.
Right. If we don't appro, if, if this is about one specific thing, no one else can get approved-
So, we'll discuss it in executive session and then vote at the end of executive session to accept the Personnel Memo. Is that where you're, yes?
Yes, if it is appropriate for executive session, yes.
Yes, okay.
Once we come out of the executive session, right, then we vote?
Yes, then we vote. Yeah, because we can't vote in executive-
This will understand you too, yeah, okay.
Karen?
I just had some questions on the tuition rates.
Okay. So, do you want to remove that from consent agenda?
Yes, please.
Okay. So, let's see, so we're removing the Personnel Memo, and we'll remove the tuition rates, and, I guess, we can put, after we, program updates, how about we put it as school program updates, C, we'll move the tuition rates there, 4C. Sure. Does that sound reasonable?
Yes.
Yep. All right. So, now, we have an agenda, with a couple changes, Personnel Memo, tuition rates removed from consent agenda, tuition rates will be under 4C, and Personnel Memo will be number 10, and adjournment will be moved to number 11. Karen?
Move to approve the regular agenda, consent agenda with the changes that have been made.
Thank you, second?
Second.
Okay. And, all those in favor?
Aye.
And any opposed? Okay, great. All right. So, then, next up, we have the consent agenda as modified for our previous meeting minutes, the school calendar draft, and the bid for the HVAC Building Controls Recommission Project Bid. Entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda? Second. And, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, excellent. And then Communications, we did not have anyone sign up for public input. Anyone rushing or raising a hand out there? So, our next agenda item is a school or program update, so we'll turn it over to our student representatives.
RAS has been all buzzed with excitement lately. Our character trait for December was gratitude. We want to express our sincere gratitude for the many organizations that have helped support our students, especially during the holiday season. We are pleased to share that RAS had the most winners in the 2023 Robert Howe Fire Safety Calendar, sponsored by the Vermont Division of Fire Safety. We had three students selected to be included in the calendar, with another four students receiving honorable mention. Congratulations to Abby Gouge, Kelvin McCarthy, Matthew Pryor, McKenna Bride, Juliana Howland, Marlee Barclay, and Orin Carrier, who has the distinction of being on the cover. All students were able to attend an award ceremony at the Vermont State House on Friday, December 9th. Thank you to our art teacher, Mrs. Lori Kramer, for all her efforts in organizing the opportunity for our third grade students. Northwest has been hard at work after the holiday break. Teachers are currently getting prepared to distribute the first report cards of the year. Northwest would like to thank the PTC and the generosity over the past month to support families. Just prior to the holiday break, we were able to provide support to over 50 families. Northwest and Northeast schools had guest appearances from Bigfoot to support the Come Alive Outside Passport activities within Rutland County. Passports are sent home with the students to encourage community activities through the winter months. And at Northeast? Northeast had a pause assembly January 4th with a focus on creativity. We had local author, illustrator, and parent Jonathan Schroff presenting his children's book, A Tale of Blackberries, at this assembly, and his book was given out to character trait winners and to each classroom. Northeast School PTC is busy planning many enrichment and family engagement events, including holiday make and take activities, a contra dance, a picnic with books, and guest, guest readers, and springtime staff appreciation events.
At Rutland High School, we are musicians. Congratulations to the band, chorus, and orchestra students who have now completed their winter concerts. All of the events were well attended, and the students outdid themselves. We are graduates. Grove Street Campus will honor its mid-year graduates this Friday with a graduation ceremony that will be open to families, students, and staff. Grove Street has been operating successfully for over 30 years. We are the future. The high school guidance department is hosting the eighth grade open house on Thursday, January 19th. This is an opportunity for prospective high school students and their families to meet teachers, learn more about the school offerings, and meet future classmates. We are scholars. The high school semester is coming to a close this week, and students will be taking their exams on Thursday and Friday. These important academic days are filled with students' presentations and assessments. On Wednesday, January 11th, Stafford Technical Center will be one of six locations around the state to host a career in technical education listening session. APA consultants were contracted by the Vermont Legislature to conduct a study on the Vermont CTE Government Architecture and Funding System. APA will be hosting the session and are looking for community input in regards to what is working well in career and technical education and what needs improvement. The results of the study will lead to recommendations made to the Joint Fiscal Committee and the Vermont Agency of Education, as they develop a plan for CTE in Vermont going forward. The listening session will be held tomorrow from 4:00 PM to 5:30 PM at Stafford Technical Center. Students in our construction technology, electrical, and plumbing and natural resources programs are putting the finishing touches on our Student Craft House project on Mona Vista Avenue here in Rutland City. Students have worked steadily on the energy efficient home, and we are excited to be in the final stages. The goal is to have the home on the market in March.
Okay, all right. Thank you, Lauren Holden. And, next up, we have the school choice report and limits. And, all right, Steve is going to address us about that.
Good evening, folks. I'm Steve Sampson, one of the associate principals at the high school. I come before you each year around this time to talk a little bit about school choice, and we do it at this time because my understanding is you're charged as a board to set the limits that we have in place. My understanding, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think we have to be at at least 40. We can be a little bit higher if you choose, but my understanding is we can't be any lower than that due to our current enrollment. So, included in your packet is the information that I'm going to be reviewing. For the past several years, we've allowed 40 students to go, come into Rutland High School and to leave Rutland High School through this school choice program. The timeline that has been in place statewide is January 4th, typically right after we return from the December break through the end of February, so that is the 28th this year. On occasion, it's necessary for schools to have a lottery. So, the way the lottery works is if there are fewer, more applicants than spaces available, you're required to have a lottery. So, this year, for example, we anticipate that we're going to have 18 openings at the end of this school year, and if we have 18 or fewer applicants for school choice, they are all automatically accepted. There's no screening process, everyone who applies is accepted. If there are more than 18 applicants, then we have to have a lottery, and it's essentially picking names out of a hat, and the first 18 names that are selected are offered enrollment, and then the remaining students are added to a prioritized waitlist. And this year, we began the year without a waitlist. Some years, we do have a waitlist. This year, we haven't had a waitlist. Numbers for this year, we have 31 students attending Rutland High School through school choice. We have 15 students who have left Rutland High School to attend other schools, and that gives us a net gain of 16 students. And then, the very last entry there at the bottom of the page is a breakdown by grade level. So, on the left-hand column, the number of incoming students, we have nine seniors, eight juniors, six sophomores, and eight freshmen. That makes up the 31 students we have coming into Rutland High School. And in terms of the outgoing students, we have three seniors, two juniors, five sophomores, and five freshmen, which make up to 15 outgoing students.
Can I just add, add onto that a little bit? So, Steve, Steve mentioned in the past, we've had 40 coming in and 40 coming out, that's the limit the board has set for, as long as I can remember, I think. And so, that's, that's our recommendation, that we keep those limits. I want to make a couple things clear from the memo, just so you know, this, this is, these are for students, we're not talking about, these are for students who have a designated high school already, like Rutland City students, or students who live in the Fairhaven District or in the Otter Valley District, and they, they have an interest in going to some other place for whatever reason, and so they go through this process to, to try a different high school if they're, if they want. We're not talking about setting limits for students with, that don't have a designated high school, like Rutland Town students or Barstow students, so that's, that's a whole separate thing. So, we're only talking about the students that have a designated high school and might, might want to switch. And, I don't think I said this already, but the other point I wanted to make was tuition does not follow the student, so if we are sending a student away, student chooses to go somewhere else besides Rutland High School, the tuition doesn't go with, with the student. If a student comes in to the high school, the tuition, tuition doesn't come in with the student. Tuition stays at the, at the high school where the student lives. So, that's, I think that's it. I just wanted to make sure that was clear, and if you have any questions for us. It's a little bit of a confusing process, but we're thinking 40 and 40 is good. It's been, you can see by the numbers Steve presented, that's basically where, where things are at, so.
I believe the only discretion the board has is the incoming limit, because the outgoing is prescribed by the state based on our numbers.
That's right, right, right. There's no, like, I think that fourth from the bottom paragraph says, no formula for the, for the incoming.
Right. So, if we wanted to change from the 40, we couldn't do it for the outgoing, we only could for the incoming. It's really the only thing that we could control. Any questions? Discussion, no? I'd entertain a motion?
Motion that we retain the limits as they are at 40 and 40?
Okay.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. Thank you. Thanks, Steve.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so, now, in our revised agenda, we have the tuition rates. So, maybe to start off the conversation, I would entertain a motion to approve the tuition rates as suggested in the memo. So, move. Second?
Second.
Okay. And, discussion? Karen?
I was just wondering, I know that, or I understand that last year, the rates were increased 10%, and, or last year, I'm sorry, it was 14%, and it's 10% this year. I'm just wondering if that's like, an average of what, so that makes the, the cost per pupil at 21,000, 21,485. I wondered if that's on par with other schools, as far as the tuition rates, or no?
Yeah, I, we're, we're right around, it's right around that area, and Ted, Ted's been talking with other business managers in, in the region, he, he probably has the numbers better than I, but, um, yeah, sure, come on up. But there's a process where we're trying to align our tuition rates with what our costs are.
Right.
So, we want to make sure that Rutland City taxpayers are, are, we're, we're offering this opportunity that we're not going to undercharge folks coming in.
Right.
Does that make sense? So, I don't know if you want more to add to that?
That's a great question, thank you for asking. And, to pick up on the point that they just made about undercharging, this is about common practice among business managers, is even before boards, fully and officially, we start sharing them with each other, just to do some comparisons. And, one of the most interesting comments I got back from a business manager in the area was when they looked at the proposed high school tuition of 21,000 dollars. Wait a minute, typically, Rutland City is paying all the rest of the cost. Why are you increasing it? And, of course, the answer is because we were probably underpricing it before. One way to think about it, Karen, is, you know, we have an average cost per student, per equal, as pupil, from K through 12 for the district. That's the number that's going to appear in the ballot language that we're going to talk about tonight. That number for 24, as of now, is looking to be about 20,172. Typically, the costs for high school per student are more expensive than the average cost for elementary school, okay? So, when you look at these tuition numbers that we're proposing, you'll see that the high school of 21,000 is a little above the average for the district, just as the elementary school is actually more than a little below. As a matter of fact, just again from a historical standard, as we looked at the information going back a few years, our elementary school tuitions also were substantially underpriced, not only relative to others, but relative to district costs. I don't know why that was. As far as I'm concerned, it's water over the dam. But what we're doing is, and the reason why you're seeing some higher than perhaps expected percentage increases is, it's a catch-up. And, when I proposed these rates to bill, one of the rationales I had was, I would have difficulty going to the taxpayers of the city of Rutland and saying that I wish to offer students from other towns a tuition rate that's lower than my average cost within the city, because that would be tantamount to asking the taxpayers of Rutland City to subsidize others, and I have no interest in making that request. So, that's why you've seen coming up. Now, here's a really important point, and this is very important in terms of the general fairness and general interest. Let's suppose we came forward and said, I said, hey, well, this year, let's charge $25,000 for high school. He said, go for it, Ted. Okay? And that would be way over what our real costs were. The state has a governance mechanism, which is called allowable tuition. It tends to be on a two-year lag because they need actual costs. What would happen in that case is, if the tuition that we charged to students coming in was more than 3% above what the AOE subsequently decides is the allowable cost for the year, we'll know the allowable costs for fiscal '24, two years since, and fiscal '26. And when that reconciliation is done, we may have to go back and say, oop, we charged too much, we're going to have to refund some money. Say we charged 5% over the allowable, then we'd have to refund that money, and that's a fair thing to do. But guess what? It's a lot easier to issue refunds than it is to go to school districts and say, by the way, we undercharged you, would you please remit the extra money that you haven't yet paid? Because we've had occasions where people are very stubborn and not wanting to do that. So, I would prefer to err on the side of protecting the Rutland City taxpayers, knowing that there is a process down the road to refund any overcharges that might occur.
Do you know why it takes so long for the state to calculate this?
Yes. Yes, think about it this way, and, and, and the state's actually, I'm going to tell you one thing, the state is actually calculating it pretty fast.
Really?
In the recent two years, Ted, that definitely, but here's the reason. What are we talking about right now? We're talking about the tuition and, of course, the budgets for 24. What's the most recently completed fiscal year? It's '22. It was fiscal year '22, ended on June 30 of this year. And so, the state needs time for all the school systems to send in all the, the information in August and September to process and consolidate and analyze those actuals, and then, as the fall progresses, to go and say, okay, now you've had a chance to actually look at your actual numbers, and we can do our magic to calculate what the allowable tuition should have been. And then, typically, in November and December, around this time, they start to issue that. So, now, we know what it is for '22. And just to give you hopefully, a little bit more assurance, what we did was, we, in addition to the analysis I shared, we looked at the allowable costs for fiscal '22, which we now have. And then, we said, okay, what do we know about the '23 and the '24 budgets? We know that our average cost per pupil in '23 went up by 7.4%. This budget is suggesting our average cost per pupil is going to go up by 8.3%. So, we took the fiscal '22 maximum allowable and rolled it forward by 7.4% and 8.3%, and we saw where that put us, and we charged something in that range. Again, just trying to track, you know, you could think about, well, shall I use CPI inflation? Well, that actually would be more, these days. But what you want to do is to track what your approximate costs are doing. And it's just as much art as it is science, we try and do these calculations analytically, but that's why the state wisely has a governance mechanism after the fact, to go back and just make sure, hey, if you overcharged, you're going to need to change that.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
Hopefully, everybody wants.
Okay, big star, right. So, motion on the floor to approve the tuition rates as stated in the memo, and-
Motion to approve.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. Next up, we have central office reports, so I will turn it over to Superintendent Olson.
You? I, I guess I want to repeat a point that Holden made a few minutes ago. We have our Grove Street graduation coming up this Friday, and at this time of year, we have a number of students who have, who've met graduation requirements at Grove Street for, for high school. They, they finish up this, this Friday, at the end of the first semester, because that offers them the opportunity to either go into the workforce, to go on to post-secondary school, and they are, many of them come back for the graduation ceremonies in June, so they can, they can come back, but we have this, this ceremony for them, just in case they decide they, they don't come back and they want to move on with life. So, we're inviting you all to that, if you have an interest. It's a small setting. This year, actually, we have nine students, I think, graduating, if I, if I have the number correct, and in fact, they are all right here, this is the Grove Street newsletter.
That's very well put together, and very impressive with the items that they have been doing.
Yeah, I'll, I'll pass that on to them. It's all student-written, as you can see, and in this middle flyer are, are nine graduates. So, these guys, they each get to have a little bit of a piece of the graduation, it's very personalized, it's very inspiring, actually, to hear about some of the obstacles that they overcame, they finally reached the finish line. So, I want to congratulate them, and thank the staff at the high school, and the city schools, actually, for all the good work that they did to help the kids get there, thank their families, and you can make it, it's, starts, starts at 1:00. It's at the Grove Street Campus on the left side of the building, that's where the entrance is, and it's really, it's about, lasts about an hour or so, so, it's a, it's a nice ceremony. So, please come if you can. And, I wanted to give us, give the community an update on our portrait of a graduate work. Many of us have been able to come to this at the board level, but just so the community knows, we had last December, I think it was the 14th, I think that our date was, we had, I think, 60, 63 people show up for, for this third meeting, and our third meeting, the focus was, we were looking at the competencies that we decided as a, as a large group, that these are the most important skills and attributes that our students should be able to have by the time they finish with our schools, finish and graduate. That's our, our vision for what a graduate should be at Rutland City Schools. So, we, we took a look at that, those seven competencies, we agreed that, that this is what they were, then we tried to flesh out exactly what, what do they mean, so we did a lot of language work, looking at the definitions of what, what, for instance, communication means or critical thinking means. We also took a look at how we will visualize this, we had, we had a couple different samples of different visual representations of, of our ideas, and as a group, we came down to some conclusions, so we, we basically have a finished product. That, those suggestions that came from that design group came back to the steering committee, we did some more refinements, and I think we're, we're basically done with our, our work. So, our next meeting is this Thursday, and it's at the high school, for you board folks, and, um, high school, 4:00, and it's going to be in the theater. There will be snacks. And, our work for Thursday is to take a look at, just finalize that, that product, that should be a checkoff, and then we're going to talk about how are we going to implement this into our, our instruction and our systems and our practices. We want to make sure that we think about how we embed this into what we, what we do going forward. This is our vision, how are we going to, how are we going to put it into practice. So, that's the work for Thursday, and that's our last meeting. So, I want to thank everybody for, for attending through this, four different meetings, we've had great attendance, even with some illness happening, we, we appreciate people giving up their time and contributing their thoughts to this process, it's been really good. And, last thing I wanted to say, we have, we don't have guidance for COVID anymore, we have recommendations, and I just want to remind people of the recommendations of some of the, some of the things that are coming out of the Vermont Department of Health. This is the time of the year where we're seeing a lot of, a lot of respiratory illnesses. We have flu, COVID, RSV that are affecting our, our kids and our adults in the buildings. So, we're just reminding people of what the recommendations are from the Department of Health. Basically, it hasn't changed from what it was last spring. If you're sick, we want you to stay home, so we don't, we don't spread illness, we want to make sure our schools are as healthy as possible, so we're asking people to make sure that they take the time to stay home and, and overcome their, their symptoms and not spread infection. And, Department of Health is also asking people and recommending that if you haven't gotten vaccinated yet for flu or for COVID, please do so, it really makes a difference, it's helping. So, kids age six months and up can get vaccinated, and we encourage people to do that. So, that's it for Superintendent's report, unless you have any other health tips for us. No health-
Get them all.
Got them all, all right.
All right, excellent. So, next up, then, is the budget planning. So next up then is, um, the budget planning. And we'll return, represent us with that.
Thank you, everybody. I appreciate, uh, the time to go over proposed '24 budget and ballot language. Uh, as you probably know, in addition to providing your, hopefully your approval of the proposed budget, uh, we would ask, pending that, that the school board also ratified some proposed budget language. Those would be the two objectives for tonight, if we satisfied your questions and any concerns. What we're gonna go over tonight is not significantly changed from what you've seen earlier. The message is basically the same. There are a few minor tweaks, uh, as we've made some updates. I'll flag those for you as we go through the presentation. Uh, but again, no, no significant changes from what you've heard in the past. So, on the second page, you can see in the box, there is the mandatory ballot language. And as you will recall, I'm sure, uh, we only have to fill in three numbers. And I'll give you our recommendations for those numbers in just a moment. Um, as you know, the rest of the language is mandated, we can't, we can't modify it, we can't add to it. Uh, you might recall that of the total expenditures that we're gonna show you, typically employee compensation is about three-quarters of an average annual budget. Um, and state-provided metrics do have impact upon these numbers, because as you'll see in the third line from the bottom, it talks about education spending of X per equalized pupil. And the agency of education is the entity that calculates the number of equalized pupils that each school system has. And they use a variety of weights in order to come up with that, as we've talked about during the waiting study. So, that becomes a given. And I do wanna say that it's possible that that number could change. Things seem to be settling out relatively early in the process this year, which is good news. But, um, that number could potentially change over the next few months. Hopefully, if it does, not by much. That, of course, then, impacts the percentage increase in the equalized, uh, spending per, the, spending per equalized pupil. So, the district is responsible for, you know, deciding what we wanna do in terms of expenses and, and a lot of our revenues, uh, but state factors do have an impact on this as well. So if you'll turn to the next page, you'll see that we filled in the boxes. And the proposal is going to be for the school to expend $74 million in total, which includes a substantial amount of federal grant money out of the ESER program. We, um, have done some consultation with the AOE since our meeting of, of a month ago. And their recommendation is, um, to school districts, if your district has been approved for a, a certain amount of ESER funding, uh, through the grant management system and the review process that we have gone through, then include the remainder of that, the unspent dollars or the uncommitted dollars, include the remainder of that for fiscal '24, because that grant expires on September 30th of 2024. Which means there are only a very few months in early fiscal '25 when you could spend that. The good news here is, the money that we add in for this federal grant ESER funding goes in and it goes out, in the sense that we'll add it into expenses, but it's a federal revenue, so it gets subtracted out of the calculations before tax rates have to be calculated. So what we've added in here, as I'll show you in a few minutes, doesn't change at all the potential impact on local taxpayers. We're just taking advantage of dollars that all of us have already sent to Washington, DC, and hopefully we'll get back. With the calculations and the budget that we're gonna show you, it results in that average spending per pupil across all the grades, K through 12, of just under $20,200. And the board package had 8% in the third box. Um, we're gonna recommend, we typically show that to one decimal point. So the decimal point for this year, as we'll see on another chart, will be 8.3%, okay? So, let's see. I wanted to talk about that 8.3% because, of course, it's a large percentage, and nobody is happy about that. But the fact of the matter is, it's pretty much in the range of what inflation has been this year. And I have a couple of, uh, statistics on the chart, which come from the U.S. Bureau of Labor Statistics. They look at these things nationally. And one of the things that struck me is if you look at their CPIU for urban inflation indicator this year, and they haven't yet announced December, but out of the 11 announced months so far, seven of them were 8% or higher. So, you know, inflation has started to dip a little bit in November possibly, but one month the trend doesn't make. Uh, we'll wait and see. So, we shouldn't be too surprised that we're in this 8% range. And actually, we're fortunate that we have been managing some things, as I'll show you in a moment, to keep it there. I saw one other school district whose average cost per pupil is expected to go up by 14.5%, which was announced this week. So, um, you know, everybody's got a different challenge. If you'll turn to page four, uh, we've taken a look in the past at the trends of full-time employees. This is excluding the, uh, full-time employees that we have added recently and will add using ESER funding. And we'll talk about that separately, because what I want you to see is the basic trend excluding, without the temporary ins and outs, uh, of that interim funding. And as you can see, um, you know, going back to fiscal '21, we've been working assiduously to try and optimize staffing where we can. Um, the budget for this year for '23 includes 493 positions, uh, full-time positions. By the way, we, the, the school district typically employs between 60 and 80 part-time employees, which varies, uh, during the year depending upon seasonal needs. We're proposing a budget for '24 that would be down by 11 full-time positions, a decrease of about 2%, which is pretty much in line with what we anticipate enrollment is going to do. But we're not picking the 2% for that reason. What we're trying to do is to look at our programming, look for opportunities where we can optimize or rebalance staffing without dramatically impacting or hurting our educational programming. And, and as you might recall from an earlier presentation, the district in '22 had turnover of more than 10%. When you include both resignations and retirements, more than 50 people left the school district. And what we've done is to opportunistically decide which of those positions we would rehire for, and which of those we did not. Thereby managing staffing levels while hopefully doing the minimum amount of hurt in terms of people's jobs. So, it wasn't an automatic rehire, the, the administration team looked at that, and we ended up being down in net 11, as you can see. That's a very important driver of cost, because obviously, with people, uh, compensation being about three-quarters of the total budget, when you bring down the positions, you very much help to offset year-to-year increases in cost per person for both salary and benefits. Um, any questions about that? Okay, let's go on to page five, and of course, you're, you're always entitled to ask me to go back if you have a follow-up question. So this next page has really two panels, an upper and a lower panel. And I wanna focus your attention above the line at first, and then below the line. Cause above the line is our salary and benefit costs, again, excluding those ESER-funded positions. You know, come fiscal '25, we won't have any ESER-funded positions unless the government decides to make some changes, and so we wanna keep in, in, in view what those trends are, so we don't get, uh, we don't get out of whack. And what you can see is, total compensation costs based on this budget and our expectations would essentially be flat from '23 to '24 at a little over $47 million, because mainly of the reductions in personnel. And also, our utilization of ESER compensation. And if you look below the line, you can see one of the reasons why I wanted to separate this out for you. Because there's a very dramatic increase from '23 to '24 in our utilization of ESER funding for, uh, compensation of, let's see, it would be 13 positions in '24, uh, costing a total of 1.5 million. Year-to-year, of course, that's up by $647,000, or 74%. Well, that's, again, not gonna be paid for by the taxpayer. You could argue we've already paid for it and the dollars were sent away. Um, so what's gonna impact, what is gonna impact the taxpayer is what's above the line, and we are using these ESER funds as aggressively and creatively as we can to meet school needs while using those funds. The next page also is excluding ESER. And then the following page, I'm gonna put ESER in there, and you can begin to see the impact. But again, to kinda keep trends, um, basic, without the ins and outs of some of the ESER initiatives, let's just go down this line for a minute, because you can see, I think, pretty importantly, that if we were not to include any of the ESER initiatives and funding, actually, our total expenses would be up by about 1% year-to-year. Because basically, compensation is close to flat, and we have some other changes in and out that I'll talk about in a moment. In this environment, that is a pretty, I believe it's a pretty impressive result, and the credit goes to a lot of hard work by the administration over many months, because there are very important decisions to make in terms of what can we afford to do, what can we defer, what do we not need to do while maintaining educational excellence? So let's just go down the line for a moment. I wanna, I wanna first, uh, point out special education. Down a half a million dollars, 31%. That is not a cost-saving in its entirety. Part of that is a reclassification of what used to be third-party professional services costs that were paid for out of this line, which instead involve services that are going to be performed by newly hired employees. So as you'll see, this line says X salary and benefits. Salary and benefits were above, we dealt with that already. So, in the 11, uh, full-time reduction that you saw, that actually included a plus of a couple of positions for people who are gonna perform some of these services in-house, so it was offset by additional reductions. So, I don't want anybody to have the impression either that we're shortchanging the special education program, or that we're saving that full amount of money. There are some savings, probably a few hundred thousand in this line, because of efficiencies that we hope to achieve by bringing these services in-house. But this is basically a reclassification story. Facilities and transportation. Now, this is before you get into all the extra ESER projects that Glenn talks about in the building committee, uh, meetings. But a big factor in that 14%, $255,000 increase is, one of the projects that we're thinking about doing in '24, we hope to do, which is not funded by ESER, is to spend several hundred thousand dollars resurfacing the parking lot in the high school. In Glenn's view, um, there are, there are parts of that parking lot that are beginning to show serious signs of wear, and the idea, of course, is repair before the costs get even higher. Now that's an expenditure that is somewhat discretionary, um, but we believe that it's prudent to go ahead and do it now. The food service, up by 7%. As you've heard me say in the past, that is capped by the state, based upon CPI metrics that it uses. Food costs, if you believe the inflation statistics that the, the Bureau of Labor Statistics puts out, are more like double-digit, but that's all, that we, that we are allowed to pay our food vendor, and we just have to make sure that we work closely with the food vendor to see that our students get the meals that they need. Financing costs are up about 8% because we have added, um, a lease-to-purchase arrangement for four buses. Um, we added at a very favorable rate, as approved by the board, fortunately before the rate hikes began and, and took off in March of this year. The good news there is actually, come, the next time we have this review together for the fiscal '25 budget, that financing line's gonna drop very significantly in cost, because in the coming year, we're gonna pay off a fairly large debt issue. So there'll be good news to come on that. On utilities, again, not a great story, up about $300,000, 33%. But again, that's reflective of a 50% increase in heating oil, you know, 12 to 15% increases in electricity. Not a whole lot we can do about that, other than to be as careful as we can on our consumption. Now, the last line, I especially wanna highlight, because we've talked about preparing for the eventual replacement of the turf at alumni field, which buries an estimated, estimated cost of a half a million dollars to $600,000. Glenn would be the person that could provide you the, the latest and greatest update. But there is significant lead time to do that, and then the estimate of our athletic director and others of the administration, that field is beyond its useful life, and we need to think seriously about replacing it in calendar '24 before anybody gets hurt. So, what we've done is, we've added into that line $250,000 as sort of a partial, uh, beginning for the ultimate cost, because the work could begin in the spring of calendar '24, which is in this '24 fiscal year. It might be completed in the summer of '24. That would be in the next budget year of fiscal '25. And who knows, there may be some fundraising. But we thought it would be responsible to begin, uh, to fund some of that work in the spring and, and get, get that going. Um, as you're gonna see in a moment, I think that, I think, I feel very comfortable in telling you that we can include this $250,000 without increasing the burden on our local taxpayers in any significant degree. So, before we move on to ESER, that is how we end up with about a three-quarters of a million dollar increase in total expenses. Any questions, or did I skip many lines that are of interest to anybody? Okay, now let's move to the big, the big category, which is ESER. So if you go to page seven, so, in the '23 budget, we had about $1.8 million of ESER funds in that budget. And we talked about with and without, so you could see the percentage increases. That 1875 was approximately $900, $900,000 for carpeting, and, um, we also had about 10 positions in there for about $900,000 in compensation. We're putting in all of the rest of the ESER funding that the district has been approved for on a preliminary basis. Um, and Abby and Rob can speak to the details as they have about that, but this is the balance of the funds that with the concept plans that we have submitted and received approval on, we would have the opportunity to spend. That will be a challenge, obviously, um, given, uh, given our staffing, but, uh, we have firm plans for a lot of this already. We, we've been putting out, uh, requests for proposals and contracts. So, you know, it's there, but you can see why I'm isolating it on one line, because were I to spread it across some of the different categories, it would really significantly distort, um, what's happening on, on the base year-to-year. And I do have in an appendix some additional insights into the timing and the amounts. But basically, um, it's, it's in several categories, which include our, our facilities and include staffing, uh, for educational purposes. And again, it's what Abby has, has been reviewing with you in the past. Were I, were I to have included that, you can see that with the ESER funding, total expenses are not up by just 1%, they'd be up by 20%. But that's not gonna be what hits the taxpayer. Let me, let me go on to revenues then, on page eight. So, this is the, this is the other side of the equation, so we are having a very significant increase in our top line, because what we added in on the expense side for ESER projects, we add into the revenue side for ESER-related revenues, and that's why it's the in and out. We've got tuition, um, we're assuming, uh, that it'll be about flat. And going back to Karen's question earlier, this is one of the reasons why we're trying to utilize whatever flexibility we have to make sure that we're pricing the tuitions with fairness to everybody, including the local taxpayer. So at any rate, uh, not, not a, not a big change there, but it's a significant amount of revenue for us. No working capital drawdowns. There's a possibility that the, because the state has been changing the model by which it is going to compensate for special education, that this district could receive less money in '24 than it has received in the past, based on a reimbursement model. We are moving to a block grant model that is based on state averages, which are not necessarily indicative of individual variation. Um, I don't, I don't like it. I, I don't think that it helps a community like Rutland, but I can't change it. And that's basically what we're looking at for the time being. I'm hoping that as we get further into this, we will get actually some better news. And maybe it will, maybe it won't be a drop of 1.2 million, but at the, for the time being, we're being conservative and, and just going with the best estimates we have. So the total federal and local revenues, including these, come up to 35.4 million. And the reason why that's important, and it has an asterisk, is because if you look at the little box to the lower right, you'll see, well, okay, we had expenditures budget of 74. If I subtract off the 35 million of federal and local, that leaves about 39 million to be funded from the state through its state education fund. And that's all that Vermont cares about. You can, you can spend more money on the federal side if you bring the revenues in. All Vermont wants to know is, how much do I have to pay? All Vermont wants to know is how much do I have to pay for? And that's 38.7 million, and that's up by 5% year to year, or close to 2 million. That does increase, that does tend to increase the tax rate, all other factors being the same. Fortunately, going to '24, all other factors are not the same. As a matter of fact, because the state has decided to make a very significant increase in one of its metrics called the property yield, that is going to more than offset some of these changes, and I'll talk with you about that in just a moment. Let's go on to page nine then, and you'll see how this is similar. So there you'll see in the middle of the page, the total expenses that we discussed of 74 million, including a big chunk of ESER funds. The federal and local revenues of 35, also including significant ESER funds, coming down to that 38 million of state-funded, this is what Vermont wants to recover from its taxpayers. The equalized pupils, you'll see, I've got these numbers in blue because they are very likely to change, but it's very possible they won't change much, because in the first two or three iterations that we've received, these numbers have, have stayed in the same range of about 1917 to 1915. So hopefully, these are pretty good. I, I don't like the drop of 53 or 3%. I think that that reflects the fact that we are still operating with the 20-plus-year-old weights, which don't accurately reflect what's involved in educating students who come from different backgrounds with different needs. But that's what the system is right now, and hopefully, it will change in fiscal '25, but it won't affect this budget. So when we take the 38.7 million and we divide by 1917 equalized pupils, that's how you come up with the 20,172 per student. And that is up 8.3% over the previous year at 18.6. But as you can see, a significant portion of that, and, and the numbers round a little differently, but, you know, about 5% of that is because of our increased draw on the state, and about 3% of that is because we're getting credit for fewer students. So it's not like saying that our costs are going up like, like, to the state by 8%, but we have this per capita calculation that, that makes it look like it is a higher percentage, and, and per capita, it certainly is. We are about the same as the state of Vermont, as you can see. We're both in there at about 20,200. Again, it's for reasons like this that we felt like we have to be very careful about how we price the tuitions. We certainly don't want to be charging less than what it costs us. Any other questions about this page? Okay, so what we would ask for the board to consider doing is to consider a motion that would approve proposed ballot language that would have 74.1 million in the first box, it would have 20,172 in the second box, and very importantly, which is different from your hard copy, it would have 8.3% in the third box. The last thing that I want to mention to you is, and this is just as an aside, these, these numbers and what these numbers reflect in terms of what we believe is responsible spending, both to our students and to the taxpayer, those are hopefully what drives the decision. But most people also like to know what are the implications for the homestead tax rate than recognizing some of these percentages? And as I've shared with the finance committee and with the board on one occasion, because the state has opted to basically return more money back to individual school districts in the form of tax relief, which is driven by a significant increase in that metric called yield, that is going to very likely more than offset the negative impacts on tax rates of a dropping CLA, the Common Level of Appraisal, and this increase in our spending. Well, Ted, what does that mean? What that means is, as best as I can estimate at this time, and numbers will change, and it is only an estimate, I don't believe that this budget will significantly change the homestead tax rate in '24 versus '23. Plus or minus a few cents in either direction is possible, and again, the numbers will continue to change, but I don't think we're looking at a, a larger increase in the tax rate. If I thought that that was an exposure, I would, I would tell you that, and I think it's important to put it in context. But we are being, we are being helped by that 16% increase in yield, which went from, I think about $13,000 for fiscal '23 to over $15,000 in fiscal '24. Of course, all school systems are benefiting that, and the state did it for a good reason. So that, that is, that is what I wanted to cover with you tonight, and I'm glad to answer any questions.
Thank you, Ted, for presentation and all the iterations as you've presented this information, and all the little changes in the finance committee and all the board members that have participated in that as well. So I would entertain a motion if someone would like to read the proposed ballot language for the budget?
I will.
So the voters of Rutland City School District approved the school board to expend $74.1 million, which in the amount the school board determined to be necessary for the ensuing fiscal year. It is estimated that this proposed budget, if approved, will result in education spending of 20,179 per equalized people. This projected spending per equalized people is, should I say, 8.3? 8.3% higher than spending for the current year.
Second?
Go again.
Okay. Any discussion? None? All those in favor?
Aye.
And opposed? Okay, motion carries.
She's good. She's quiet. She's quiet. I turned her down.
Excellent. Okay. So, and next up, we have committee reports. First one, we have policy committee report with Kathy, and I believe she asked Assistant Superintendent Bliss to cover her since he is in person here.
Hi, Kathy. Hope you're doing well. You have the minutes from the last policy meeting in your packet, and in general, we spent a couple of meetings looking at policy 4250, which is the supervision, the evaluation of the superintendent. We got some input from the ULC Council on what that procedure would be in this evaluation. After a lot of deliberation, the input from the ULC Council was moved to become a procedure within the office of the superintendent. It will be held by Sherry Bizarro and within our administrative policy manual. I apologize that the actual policy, 4250, which was moved for first reading, isn't in your packet. That's my fault. We finished that meeting more than a month ago, and I neglected to have it included today. So it will be in your next board packet for first reading with minor changes. The other thing we discussed at the last meeting was, we started to look again at the policies in the 5,000 series, and we had a substantial discussion about how the boosters are coming along in terms of becoming a 501(c)(3). And the committee there had a nice discussion about how we want to make sure we're protecting the district and also supporting the boosters and, and caring volunteers who want to do their work. But we want to make sure that the district is protected liability at all turns in terms of how the finances work. And so that was the outcome and what really occurred at the last meeting. I know many board members were there, but that's what I have in the minutes, and if anybody else has anything they want to add.
Kathy, good?
Good. She's good.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thanks, Rob.
Thank you.
Next up, we have the building committee report. I'll send that over to Kevin.
Okay. We met January 3rd, a week ago, discussed, first, we, we reviewed the damage to a couple of our buildings from the, the windstorm we had on December 23rd, I believe. There was some roof damage at Northeast, some, there was damage to an antenna and the facade on Stafford Technical Center. All of the damages were, insurance claims were submitted for all damage. There was also a tree that fell from our property onto a neighbor's fence and into their, their yard, and our staff were assisting with removal of the tree. Not as bad as it could have been, and it looks like everything should be covered, so we can move forward on that. We also discussed the, the ESER HVAC Phase 1 RFP. Two bids were received, and, and we'll be looking into the details regarding that. Wait, is that the one we just voted on tonight?
Yeah.
Yes. Never mind, we've approved that.
[laughing]
There were also some wonderful photos of the, there's the ongoing carpet replacement project in some of the different schools, and there were some great photos. Looks like this, I'm not going to get the word right, high-quality vinyl or something like that, that looks like real wood, much better than the ugly carpet we used to have, and better for health reasons. There's also, pre-inspection happened regarding the PCB testing. The pre-inspection happened at Northeast in all but one wing that was built in 2003. So that will be an ongoing project that started at Northeast. It'll be happening at some of the other schools. We spent a lot of our time talking about that we now have three bus driver vacancies, and some of the chat, we talked about, you know, how do we recruit bus drivers? It was very informative for lots of us. If you have questions, ask, ask the board member, or ask Glenn, he'll, he'll have the right answers.
[laughing]
And that was, that was most of it.
Okay. Thank you, Kevin. And then finance and strategic planning, very best.
Thank you. We really covered four main topics, two of which have been hit pretty hard tonight. The first one being the budget, which we just spent significant time reviewing. The second one was, of course, the Portrait of a Graduate, and Bill gave a solid recap of where we are with that project. We did, conversation did ensue about where we go from here, and I think Karen and Tricia asked some questions about cost and what happens next. And so Ted did some good research and let us know that Batel for Kids could facilitate the next step, which is moving to really implementation of how do we make the Portrait of a Graduate happen, or ensure that it happens? What actual action items do we take? And so that's between $41,000 and $46,000 to have them take that on. So I think we'll be discussing that at a future finance and strategic planning committee to see if that's something we want to take on. And then we moved on to the audit, which will be completed, the fiscal year 2022 audit should be completed by the end of March, and the concurrent audit of fiscal year 21 should be done by the end of February. And so the business office staff has been working with the auditor Sullivan Powers to...
Sullivan Powers?
Yeah, Sullivan Powers. To answer any questions that they might have. And so they're really in that phase of answering questions, like I said, so, okay. So that was topic three. Topic four, we talked a little bit about cash balances and flows, somewhat relating to the, the field, the turf field financing. So the district does currently target to maintain a minimum of $3 to $4 million in its cash flows in terms of available working capital, pay salaries, all those types of really awesome and important things, and, as well as other ongoing operations. And that's about 5% to 8% of our annual expenditures. The committee will, in, in another meeting, in a future meeting, further examine seasonal cash flow patterns in more detail as a means of validating and reassessing that target for that minimum operating balances, to see exactly how much we think we need, and maybe if we're keeping too much in the coffers, or we maybe need a little more in the coffers to, to be safe and, and minimize risk. And then our next committee meeting is Tuesday, February 7th at 6:00 PM.
Great. Thank you very much. Okay, so next up, we have unfinished business, the mascot moniker extension request. So last time, it was added to the agenda, and we had much discussion. We have discussed with the administration, because we had a prior motion to the administration to come back to the board at this meeting, January of 2023, with a new mascot. And so simply, tonight, we are asking for an extension through June of 2023. So I would entertain a motion for such?
To clarify, the, the students have picked what they have considered a moniker, and so what the extension is on is the, the...
Imagery?
Imagery of what the students picked, correct?
So to be clear, the extension is on the motion, which was for a mascot. It did not mention any of the other things. And the mascot was to come back to us by January of '23. So the extension would be that same motion to come back to the board, June of 2023. So no? Not what you're saying?
Nope. Okay. That's fine. Motion to approve.
Yes. Okay. Any discussion? Karen?
Well, I think there is some confusion as to what people, I mean, the students have picked Rutland, and yet now you're saying that wasn't approved in any motion, so are you saying that is still open for a different selection? Or are they just working on the premise that Rutland is what it's going to be and working on imagery for that?
That is what was reported to us last month, yes, but the actual motion is for a mascot. I'm, you know, not changing that motion unless someone were to make a different motion. That is all we're doing, is changing the deadline to January to June. I can't hold the board liable to any other discussion that's happened between now and then, or what becomes.
I would like to clarify that. So, let's say in the event Mr. Schillinger comes to us with a very nice illustration of what a raider looks like. Is this something that's going to be considered a mascot to you, or is there going to be issue?
Not a raider.
Um, did I say, oh, sorry. Oh, so sorry. Um, Rutland. I'm, I really am sorry. If you were to come with an illustration of what Rutland looks like to the students, is that going to be good enough? Are we going to say that's not a mascot? Because I think that's where I'm feeling there's, there's not finality here.
Well, I think that no one can say that, because we are not voting on that now. So we can't say what a future board is going to decide. Or we can't say if everyone's sitting here in six months, that's what's going to be decided. I, I can't answer that. No one here can answer that. Phil?
So, yeah, we, we're coming to, Greg has done the work of, with, with the school, with the kids, of coming up with what, what their moniker wants to be, and he reported on that already. So we're looking to then create a visual representation. He's sent out some kind of a request to kids to offer, you know, get involved in this. He can, he can tell you more about that, how it went. But we're, we're looking to then come back with some kind of visual representation of what that moniker is, right? You call it a mascot or call it, you know, whatever, but we're, that's the work that we're doing right now.
Can I ask Greg to just, can you just share with us the breakdown of the voting? Do you mind doing that? Is that, is that okay?
Sure.
Okay.
So the, the, the first round of the process was, as I mentioned last month, the, the open-ended suggestion box. The, the, the suggestion was made 34 times. I'm sorry, I don't have the total number of suggestions in front of me, but the second largest number of suggestions was 12. So about twice as many times than the second most. That was the first round.
And that was Rutland? You're saying was mentioned 34 times?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, got it, yeah.
So that was the, sort of the open-ended suggesting, suggesting, I don't know that I would, but that was the first forum. That was, as was asked last month, that was open to the community as well as the student body. The second round, the... The second round, the, the 32% out of the, so I took the eight most frequent suggestions, all the way down to one that I think had been suggested three times. And I met with student council and we discussed it a little bit. Their recommendation was put all eight of them out there and then narrow down the choices. So I put all eight of them out there. Rutland was, was voted, students voted in favor of Rutland 32% of the time. The second most frequent was 12.8. So again, more than double the number of votes. I then took the top four out of those eight and Rutland was voted in favor 43.3% of the time. And the second most frequent was 26.
Thank you. Karen?
So I'm just wondering what we have to do to get Rutland as being the chosen name? If we have to approve that? And because it seems wasteful for the students to spend six months coming up with drawings and sketches and ideas regarding Rutland if Rutland is not going to be approved or has not been approved by this board. So I think that's where the confusion lies.
So, right, we have a motion on the floor. The motion on the floor is to give an extension from the August 30th motion for the administration to work with the student body to come back with a new mascot for January of '23 to extend that to June of '23.
But again, if, if...
So that is a motion on the floor. So if you would like to make a different motion, we would need to dispose of one of the motions.
I was going to say, procedurally, what do we have to do? Do we need to vote on that motion?
Yes, because we have given administration a directive to come back to us by now and they're coming back to us now asking for an extension. So we need to approve the extension if that is what the board chooses to do. Mary Beth?
Can I just ask one other question, Greg? Because I think, you know, I want to do what the kids want to do. And I think that's what a lot of us want, right? I mean, and I think that's what we all want, right? And so I think, I'm a math nerd. So I, I look at it maybe the other way around where 57% wanted something, wanted a mascot, wanted a, you know, I'm not here to argue that point, you know? We can make numbers, say whatever we want, right? We've got some accountants here. We know we can make numbers, say whatever we want. So I just, I just want us to be confident that this is what they want, right? You know, so as opposed to, you know, do you hear what I'm, you know, I'm not putting you on the spot, or I guess I'm putting you on the spot, but I mean, I'm not, I'm not trying to do that. I'm just trying to actually have, be authentic with it, you know? Anyway, that's all, so.
Charlene?
Oh, sorry.
I feel like a majority, a lot of the students probably didn't vote because they just don't care about this issue. And I'm just to the point where I just don't understand why we as a group can't discuss this and we get wrapped up in the red tape of having to go through motions after motion and keep talking about this. I think that we have a problem between, we're dancing around the fact that we're calling it a moniker, but yet some people don't want it to be the mascot. So now we're talking about the semantics between moniker and mascot. We know what's on the table here, we do. They're working on Rutland. Either we want to accept that or not, but it's hard for me because I feel like we are dancing around the semantics of Robert's rules, maybe? I don't know. But as a group, we can't discuss this and just, because we move it to June and then what? And then we're going to talk about it again? I'm just, I just, I just wish we could...
Stephanie?
Oh, sorry. No, no, that's okay.
So my recall of the motion, it said moniker slash logo slash mascot. Moniker is the word, logo and mascot are the picture, for lack of a better word. So theoretically, it should maybe the original motion should have broken, been broken down. And if we're all here for the students, then we all should have agreed, like we, as a board, when we all agreed that no matter what he came up, came to us with, we were all going to say yes. And half the board decided to go against it because they don't understand or they don't want to use the word Rutland. Kevin? Thank you. But at a certain point, we have to move on from this. Let's do this motion, let them go forward. And again, like what Allison said, we can't decide. I mean, there's going to be a different board in June, so who knows what's going to happen? But at some point, we have to just move on from this issue for the best of our students because this is taking up way too many time for almost three years now. Enough is enough. Let's just approve the original motion and let Mr. Schillinger and the students get on this and come back to us in June.
Okay, so I have a question. Can we alter the motion that's on the floor right now? Like, is there a way to change it or can we dispose of it and do a new? What I'm thinking is, can we, can we do the, yes, this is a good thing and come back to us in June and show us what it looks like? Something like that. Instead of, like, instead of saying that we're waiting till June to approve it, we can just say we approve it and come back to us in June and show us, like, it's sort of an alteration of what the motion is right now.
So, I mean, we would, you could make a motion to say something different. I don't know what exactly you're getting at.
Is that allowed for me to make a motion?
You can make an amendment.
Amendment, yes. So you'd have to propose an amendment to the motion.
Okay.
But it would need to be clear.
Clear, no, 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 I know, no.
I'm not sure what you say, like, you know, because if it's just like, then that's the motion that's on the floor. But if that like means something different, that would be an amendment.
I know exactly what you're saying. I'm sorry, I was not clear with what I was, okay. So I would like to make an amendment to the motion on the floor to say, can we vote as a board to say Rutland is a proper moniker, name, mascot, whatever the semantics of it is?
Two different things.
Okay. Rutland is a proper name.
Moniker.
For our school, for us to come together under. And we would ask the administration to come back to us in June with their imagery of what Rutland looks like to the school family.
Any discussion?
Can, I think, can Greg answer what I asked before or?
Sure.
Is that okay?
Yeah.
Like...
Yep.
You remember the question?
It's okay if you don't. I was just wondering, you know, about the, you know, the percentages and, I mean, really, I think I'm asking for your opinion, like, and I think you gave it in December, you know, but it's like when you see 57% didn't vote for it, they maybe wanted, and maybe, you know, I just want us to be authentically voting on what the kids actually want. And I don't disagree with what Charlene's saying about how, you know, I don't know if a ton of voted, so.
I'm definitely venturing a little bit into conjecture. The, I would say, A, I completely agree. I think there are a significant number of students that just really want to be done with this conversation. They just want to stop and they want the adults to stop talking about it.
Amen.
The message is, please be done. However, figure that out. However that's done, just be done. And then the second part, I would argue, I would not argue, but I would, I would say is that the, throughout almost three years, there has frequently been this, like, well, you know, the students who I talked to, the ones that I, there's been these sort of guesses at what the opinion of the collective group of students are. And none of us have really known that, you know, like, that's guesswork. So this, I would say, is the closest thing we're going to have to an actual sense of what a collective group of students will say. It is far from perfect. But I, I don't envision that there's going to be a better version of collecting the opinions of 800-plus students.
I actually want to...
Would you agree then that 57% of the students that did not actually participate in the survey then had really made their decision by not participating? And that's kind of, you know, we can't force people to do a survey, but that would be the 100%. 57 chose not to have their input. The people that participated in the survey were obviously passionate their particular way. So for us to question the 57%, life lesson, if you're that interested in the result, you'll participate, correct?
Yeah, I mean, I, yes, in broad strokes, I think the general sense, as I said, is, you know, I'm ready to be done with the conversation.
I could just clarify, I missed that 57% didn't participate. I thought that actually was quite a lower percentage.
They voted for something else. It wasn't that they didn't vote, Tricia, it's that they voted for an actual mascot.
I believe participation was a different thing.
Okay. Okay, so out of the whole population that was actually surveyed, what percentage did not submit?
I'm asking an English major to do this.
Sorry.
I'm going to say about, I'm going to say about two-thirds did not participate.
All right, I think, does Kathy have her hand up? Bill?
Oh, I'm sorry. Kathy, did you want to talk? Yep, she does. Hold on one second, I'm going to turn up the volume. Okay.
Well, I just wanted to add that it seems like we're forgetting that we are already Rutland. Rutland appears on our uniforms, it appears in signage, and I don't, I don't think we need to vote on approving Rutland because we already exist as Rutland. And if we could just approve the extension, we could move on. I mean, we are, we are Rutland. It's how we're referred to everywhere in the newspaper. And that's, that's really all I wanted to add is, it seems like we could just approve the extension and move on. Thank you.
Karen?
Kevin was before.
Oh, okay, yeah, that's it.
I just wanted to remind all of us something Greg said, I don't remember which time, but you preceded your discussion with, there's not going to be any mascot that anyone, everyone is going to agree on, which I think we need to bear that in mind. And I think we need to also be cautious that it sounds like we're all saying the same thing, but we're arguing whether to vote on it or not. And that's a waste of time and I'm done.
Karen?
Well, I would say if you don't vote on it, if it's not written in stone that it is going to be Rutland, regardless of whether that's the name of the school, that's what the students have chosen. We requested the administration to do all of this. They have done all of this work. The students who wish to participate have done so. And I think that it's very important that we conclude this before we give any extension because I don't want to see us back in June saying, oh, well, no, I don't like Rutland now after they've invested all their time and energies into it, to then decide, no, we want to change the name. So I would call the question.
Thank you. Does anyone else, any further discussion? Okay, then we don't need to vote on calling the question. So we have two motions on the floor. The first that takes precedent is the amendment. So I believe Sarah, yours was to adopt Rutland as a moniker and have the administration come back to the board with imagery in June. Second?
That's already been seconded.
So all those in favor?
Which are we voting on now?
The amendment, that's precedent. So that's what we're voting on now, to adopt Rutland as a moniker, imagery back to the board in June of '23. All those in favor? Any opposed?
I am opposed.
All right, so motion carries. And so that is the amendment, then back to the original motion, which was to extend the motion from August 30th, January '23 deadline to June 2023 deadline. So we do need to vote on that. Any further discussion?
Didn't the amendment alter the original motion?
The amendment takes precedence, you have to vote on the amendment. If the amendment failed, the other motion would still be on the floor. The amendment passed, but that doesn't delete the original.
So then doesn't, so we're voting again on the amended version?
No.
We're voting on the extension.
On the original motion.
Only the extension now.
The amendment passed.
You're saying two different things.
No, we're not.
No, we're not, we're saying the same.
You are.
We're voting on the simple extension, not the adoption of Rutland. The original motion being extended, extended till June.
Rutland has been done. Now we're just dealing with whether we're going to grant an extension until June.
Right, so we're not negating it. If we vote, we're not negating the amendment if we vote in favor of the extension.
Well, if you pass both, they would be in conflict and then you'd have to do something
Okay, that's, my understanding, my understanding was that we amended the motion to say that we were accepting Rutland.
So the amendment is what takes precedence. So that amendment passed, but it doesn't dispose of the original motion.
But it changed the original motion. That's what an amendment does.
Because she said, give them till, didn't your amendment say, give till June?
Right.
So it's been voted on.
So we voted on it.
We have amended the motion to say it approves...
But an amended motion is a new motion that takes precedent. It is, this has to be disposed of before you go back to the original motion. So how do we as a board?
So do we all vote no on, so we all vote no on the original?
Right.
Okay, then a vote no on the original.
I'm pretty positive.
Right, is that what you're saying?
I don't have Robert's rules with me now, but...
Let's do that.
If we all vote no, then that amendment goes away.
Perfect.
Oh, the amendment, oh.
No, excuse me, the original motion goes away. If you all vote no, the original motion goes away and...
And we go with what?
And we've already passed.
Okay, let's do it.
Sorry, Peter, we can't explain this.
We have no idea what's happening. You know, with Robert's rules, Kathy?
I don't know and I don't have anything with me.
Yeah, I know that, so we approved an amended, we amended, made an amended motion, that was approved.
Okay.
Because it had precedence, but the original motion is still on the floor.
Got you.
So we still have to vote on the original motion, correct?
No, you'd vote on the original motion as amended. That's what I was thinking.
Thank you, Peter.
But that we can't do because that's a friendly amendment and that is what we've had multiple discussions on.
But if that amendment has been approved, it's been attached to the motion. So, so you are still voting, the motion hasn't been voted on yet, you still vote on the motion as amended.
We voted on the amended motion.
It still, that doesn't matter. You haven't accepted the motion.
But we need to vote to say we don't accept the motion.
Then you're going to kill the amendment as well.
No, no, I get it. No, can I?
Does it really matter?
Exactly. So Peter's saying that we voted to amend the motion, which we amended it, now we have to vote on the amended motion.
Got you, I got it.
I got it.
He's already voted.
No, but he's saying that now we're saying the original motion is amended to such. So we approved the amendment. I knew it had to be voted on again.
I know, yes.
Thank you, Peter. Okay.
But in order to do what we think we say we want to do, we need to vote yes on this. Because we're voting for the amended motion.
So we are voting now, the amended motion is on the floor.
I knew we had to vote again.
Lose some brain cells.
Oh, you got it, thumbs up, all right.
So we are voting on the amended motion. The motion was originally to, the August 30th motion to retire raiders and for, to charge the administration to come back to the board in January of '23. We now have amended it to adopt Rutland as the moniker and give an extension for the administration to come back in June of '23 with imagery.
Makes sense.
Okay? Any discussion? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Unanimous, okay.
Imagine that.
Excellent, okay.
Thank you, Greg.
Thank you, Greg.
Thank you.
Thanks, Greg.
All right, any new business to come before the board? Okay?
We, is this where I have to talk about, are we, what I wanted to remove from the first section? Are we just, we're doing that in executive session only?
And we're going to vote on it afterwards.
Okay, that's right. Just wanted to...
So no new business for the board. I would entertain a motion for, to recess for five minutes and then come back in executive session. We will have to have a executive session for personnel matter. session for personnel matter and one for contractual.
So moves.
So move, okay.
And then clue.
And all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay.